Transportation Committee meeting to order. I'll be looking for a motion to approve today's agenda. Moved by Bear, supported by Williams. Any additions, deletions? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, passes unanimously. Takes us to our first opportunity for public comment. Is there any public comment? Any public comment? Last chance for public comment. Seeing none, public comment is closed. Takes us to item four A. Be looking for a motion to approve last month's meeting minutes. Moved by Bear. Supported by Walls. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, passes unanimously. Takes us to item B. Sheriff Body Scanner Project. Sheriff Shutey's here. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. I trust you all have had an opportunity to look this over. I'll just hit the highlights of this. Essentially, this is a request for the Tech 84 Body Scanner, which essentially is about as big as a closet. So, a person would walk inside of it. They would be scanned through an X-ray system. Real low-grade X-rays, so it doesn't expose them to a lot of radiation. It's like 1% of what an X-ray actually produces in the hospital. And it allows us to detect metallic and non-metallic items that might be smuggled into the jail or otherwise hidden in a person or on a person. Huge for us. This is something that nearly every jail has. In fact, I would probably say every jail does have it. We're probably one of the lone ones that do not. This would be a big deal to stop contraband from coming into our facility. It's one of our biggest issues. We have folks smuggle that in and then they use it themselves or they pass it along to other inmates. And that causes for overdose deaths and overdoses and all sorts of issues and problems. We've even had weapons smuggled in through different means inside the jail as well. So, I know the cost is considerable, but I think it probably would pay itself off with one or two lawsuits. And we have them ongoing as we speak right now as a result of folks smuggling things in. We went with the low-construction bid, which was $10,640 out of Ram Construction. They're out of Kentwood. And Tech 84 scanner comes right from the company, Tech 84. The warranty that we've requested on it was done through research by speaking with other sheriff's offices who have this system and said, "Probably anything that's gonna go wrong is gonna go wrong within the first two to three years." It comes with a one-year warranty. Then, we purchased the three-year warranty. That gives us a full four years. I think we would certainly be in good standing if it makes it through the first four years without any repairs. So, that's all that I have to say. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Committee members, are there any questions? Commissioner Bear, and I'll come to you, Commissioner Williams.
Good morning, Sheriff.
Good morning.
What's your time schedule on this project?
Well, I'd like to get it done as soon as possible. Typically, it's gonna be about a month to two-month turnaround to get the, I call it a closet made, inside of our facility. And then, it'll just be the shipping of the Tech 84, which is gonna be dependent upon, you know, the holidays and everything else. So, I'm hopeful that we get it in before then, but it would probably likely be after the holidays.
Thank you.
Commissioner Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, Commissioner Bear asked my first question. My second question is, is there any training that needs to happen with this piece of machinery?
Yes, there is. There's training that goes along with it, with the Tech 84. It's pretty minimal, but you do have to understand and learn how to run the device. And they will take care of that for us.
Okay. And then, I just wanna make sure that I understand the financing of this. So, the 142... No, I'm sorry. The, yes, the 142.50, or 500, excuse me. That is the price of the machine itself. And then, the additional cost that I'm seeing, that's just for the warranty.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. I just wanna make sure I understood that correctly.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Nothing further, Mr. Chair.
And just, yeah, go ahead, Commissioner Pliss.
Thanks, Mr. Chair, for the courtesy. I appreciate it very much. So, we get four years' worth of warranty. How long do you think, how long, what's the lifetime of this thing? Will it be obsolete slash worn out by the end of the four years?
No, I don't believe that it will. This is the latest and greatest, obviously. I know that they put one in in Berry County three years ago, and they're still very happy with it. I know that it's being used in a couple of other state detention facilities, and it's been so, been in place for quite some time. That's how I knew to get the warranty. They've had it for some time. And they said, "If, as long as everything goes..." It, there's been a couple who didn't get the warranty and then had something happen to it. And it far went past the $26,000 to have it repaired. So, I thought that was cheap insurance for us.
Well, it's, I mean, in my view, it's important to have, as you note, many, many jails have it. And contraband is one of your biggest problems. So, if we can deal with it in this way, it seems logical to me. And thank you, Mr. Chair, for the opportunity to ask a question.
Commissioner Walls.
Thank you. I just have one question. All the rest of my questions have been answered. I'm wondering, are there any contraindications for people to utilize this? So, for example, if someone, you felt they needed to go in there and be examined, is there any contraindication as far as you know that somebody should not be utilizing that piece of equipment?
No. I haven't heard of anything. We did ask whether or not it would cause some problems with different devices and things of that nature. And the answer that we received back was no. Whether or not that's changed, I don't know. But that, that was research we did about six to eight months ago.
Okay. I know this is coming out of the sheriff's capital funds, I believe. Correct, Sheriff?
Yes, sir.
I'd be looking for a motion to forward to the full board with recommendation of approval. Moved by Bear, supported by Williams. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'd ask for a roll call vote, please.
Yes, Mr. ...
Chairman Shotwell gets a vote today, 'cause we're short of a board member. All right.
Commissioner Bear.
Yes.
Commissioner Walls.
Yes.
Commissioner Williams.
Yes.
Commissioner Shotwell. Chair Kennedy.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
We will see you Tuesday night, next Tuesday night. Takes us to item C, 911 Quarterly Report.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning, Jason. How are you today?
Not too bad. I'm sure you guys have reviewed my report. I'll just touch on a few things. Foyers keep going up, requests by other departments as well. HVA interface has been up and working. Both sides are very happy with it. It gives us a lot more information. Gives the fire department a lot more information. It did go down during the firewall update, but they did get it back up for us, and it is working. We are in talks with Hillsdale County, do a cat-to-cat with them as well. Currently, we have one with Lenaway. So, hopefully, by the end of the month, we'll have that up and running. And the other ones are just some graphs, different descriptions. I did update the 15 calls this year compared to last year. I made sure I included a few items that were asked. And then, the last page is just the total amount of calls per department for the county so far this year.
Any questions, commissioners? Seeing none, I look for a motion to receive the report. Moved by Bear. Supported by Walls. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, passes unanimously. Thank you. Have a good day.
Thank you.
Takes us to item D, the Public Defender Quarterly Report. Kevin is here today. Good morning, Kevin.
Good morning, everybody. I think all of the information I intended to convey was in the report. If anybody has any questions on it, I'd be happy to take those.
Is there any questions on the report? How's staffing going?
Staffing is going better. Thanks for asking. Ms. Borders has joined us from the Lenaway area, most recently from private practice, but she was a prosecuting attorney for a number of years. She's fit in excellently with the staff. It's actually, having her onboard, we've taken that opportunity to reach out to Ms. Guernsey and Mr. Hall at the prosecutor's office. So, we've begun discussing some, some things that we can do to, you know, coordinate disposition of cases that have the opportunity to be negotiated as opposed to actively litigated. You know, neither side is going to give up, you know, those handful of cases that they absolutely cannot deal on whatsoever, nor are we willing to really become overly flexible and against our mandate, you know, concerning constitutional protections for all of our clients. So, but, you know, lines of communication are more open than they were. We think that's a really good thing.
Thank you for that. Commissioner Williams.
Thank you. My questions are similar, or question is similar. I know that, if I remember correctly, the bar, I think, is in January or February, something like that?
Yes. Yeah, we have, we have the results back. We had one person taking the bar, and she passed.
Oh, great.
So...
So, with that being said, with the passage, or with, or not that passage, but with the bar being taken, are you expecting to hire additional attorneys?
Yes.
Are there need for that?
Yes. We have openings. The positions are posted. We have two applicants so far from this most recent posting. I've spoken with one. The other one, I intend to call this week. And Ms. Borders tells me that she's been reaching out to some people that she knew, and there might be an opportunity to onboard somebody else from the Lenaway area who's with the public defender system down there.
Okay. Thank you. Nothing further.
Thank you.
You looking for a motion to receive the report? Moved by Bear.
Support.
Supported by Walls. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, passes unanimously. Have a great day.
Thank you. Appreciate you guys.
Takes us to item E, District Court Window Treatment. Good morning.
Rich D., Deputy Court Administrator. I think I've met most of you. Jeremy is out today, so I'm subbing in for him this morning on this particular item. So, I don't know if, I assume everybody's had a chance to review Jeremy's report on this as we continue to utilize our security funding. This is the next step, the window shatter treatment that will go on the first floor around the courthouse and also the FOC building. So, I'll take any questions that there might be...
Committee members, are there any questions? Commissioner Bear.
Thank you, Chairman. The total cost of this is $103,000 plus a little.
Yes.
And I see you've got a 15% contingent... No, this one's $33,600.
$33,000, sorry. Correct. Grabbed the wrong paper.
And you got a 15% contingency on there.
Correct.
I always put contingencies on all the projects that I bid. It makes sense. But I always had to get the owner's permission to spend that contingency. And at the end of the project, I had to let the owner know how much that contingency was left over because the real project money is the $29,248. Then, you've added the contingency to get up to the $33,000. I'm asking you, when the project is done, will you come back to us and let us know how much of that contingency was used and what it was used for?
Yes. But also, keep in mind, this, the $30,000 to $29,000, including the 15% contingency, is part of an overall grant that we're receiving from the state. Yep. So, but as if we've, and again, Jeremy's ran this project. It'll be going along. I've got Derek here with me today somewhere. Derek, so jump in here if you need to. But yes, that would be correct, Tony.
Oh, I understand. This is part of the overall grant. There's no cost. But if this 15,000, if this 15% is not spent on legitimate overruns, then that 15% can go back into the pool for the overall total grant and be used for something else.
Correct.
So, that's why I'm asking. I would like a report on how did this go?
We can do that, here, Tony. Yes.
All right. Thank you.
Commissioner Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Understanding where Commissioner Bear is coming from, I'm just curious if that line of request is necessary for this dollar amount.
I don't think it hurts. It's no, it's no problem, is it?
It's not.
Okay.
If I may.
Yes, go ahead.
I, it doesn't hurt. I don't think it's a problem to report back out, but I think we can easily do that another way rather than bringing an employee away from their desk, their job, and responsibilities to come here to report out on such a nominal thing. I think they could very easily do that in other ways. Yeah, exactly.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. With that being stated, this is an action item today because of the low amount. And I'd be looking for a motion for approval. Moved by Williams.
Support.
Supported by Walls. Is there any discussion? Commissioner Bear.
Contingencies are appropriate, and it's also appropriate to give a report back. If I'm not gonna get a report back on how the contingency is used, I'm not gonna vote in favor of this.
You're gonna get a report. I think what Mr. Overton was saying is it's not necessary for him to come back in person at a board meeting. It can get emailed to us. There's other ways. Okay?
There's lots of people that will contradict or try to beat down whatever I request. I'm used to it. It happens all the time.
No, you're gonna, you're gonna get a report in an email form.
What will that format be?
Well, this is the first time we've had it done, so I can't legitimately answer that question. What format would that be?
We can provide it similar to a staffing report, if that's appropriate. Same look, same, same outline.
Okay. We do have a motion and a second. I'd be looking for a roll call vote, please. You have a question? Okay. All right.
Commissioner Walls.
Yes.
Commissioner Williams.
Yes.
Commissioner Bear.
Yes.
Chair Shotwell.
Yes.
Committee Chair Kennedy.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Commissioner Bear, I'm being informed that if you want that report, you'll need to make a motion for it. Make a motion. Is that your motion? We need, you need to make a motion to receive the report. You need to make a motion that you want to report. Support. Take a roll call vote on that.
Commissioner Williams.
Yes.
Commissioner Bear.
Yes.
Commissioner Walls.
Yes.
Chair Shotwell.
No.
Committee Chair Kennedy.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Have a great day.
I'm here for the next one.
Oh, you're up. Sorry, I got lost in the weeds there.
You're stuck with me again, so.
We're on item F, the 12th District Court Mental Health Court Grant.
Good morning again. As you recall, we applied for a planning grant for to restart a mental health court with the 12th District Court about a year ago. So, for the last year, we've been planning and then putting together a mental health court, which has been very successful, and it's up and running. And so, the state has now approved us for an operational grant. So, we've moved from the planning phase to fully operational now. So, they have, as in the report it states, they have funded us $103,286 to run this program for the next fiscal year, which started October 1st. We didn't get notice until after October 1st because of the state budget wasn't approved till later. So, that's why a little bit of delay getting in front of you on this. But we are now fully operational. So, if there's any questions about the staffing report, I'd be happy to answer.
Committee members, any questions? Commissioner Bear.
Thank you, Chairman. My question is based on previous approvals of, I believe, this same grant. Previous approvals of this grant, a certain portion of the grant didn't go to the health court. A certain portion was allocated to go to one individual's paycheck. They did a stipend, so some of the grant money was given to the person for doing what their job description already required them to do. So, on this project, I want to know, is 100% of this grant going to the mental health court? Or is any stipend gonna be made and put directly into any individual's paycheck?
No, we have one full-time employee, a mental health coordinator, who you approved last April 7th at a board meeting. And that person is the only mental health court employee who will receive personnel costs from the grant.
So, the answer is 100% of this is going?
100%, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? Seeing none, be looking for a motion to forward to the full board with recommendation of approval. Moved by Williams, supported by Bear. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, if you could please post the vote. Okay, we'll just do a roll call then, and that's fine. No problem.
Commissioner Williams.
Yes.
Commissioner Bear.
Yes.
Commissioner Walls.
Yes.
Chair Shotwell.
Yes.
Committee Chair Kennedy.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, sir. Have a good day.
Have good morning.
Takes us to item G. Airport Ground Lease Renewals for Hangars 103, 158, 169, 171, and 312. Morning, Juan.
Morning, Commissioner Kennedy. This is a request to renew for another 20 years the leases for five hangars that are private-owned at the airport. And this hangar owners have been maintaining their hangars to the requirements of Attachment C. And I'm requesting a renewal for another 20 years.
Committee members, are there any questions? Seeing none, I look for a motion to forward to the full board with recommendation of approval. Moved by Bear, supported by Williams. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, passes unanimously. Takes us to item H, Airport Michigan Department of Transportation Sponsor Agreement Number 2026-0038.
Thank you. This is a M. sponsor agreement for $297,972, out of which $283,073 is the local share for the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act. And another $14,199 is a state share. So, that brings the grant amount to $297,972. And this is for completion of the terminal building rehab.
Committee members, are there any questions? Commissioner Bear.
Thank you. Good morning, Juan.
Good morning, sir.
Your right up here says that this project is for airport terminal building project. There's many aspects to that project. Can you tell me what part of that overall project this will go to?
So, I believe that this particular grant will go for the replacement of the roof in the terminal building. But just to refresh our memories on this, the total project is $2.8 million, out of which $2 million came from Congressman Wahlberg. This additional $297,972 came from the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act. And then, the balance is the local share. And that will basically provide two new boilers. It'll update the restrooms in the terminal building. It'll replace all the windows, which are 1961 vintage, as well as the roof, which is a 1961 vintage roof, and all the doors in the building. Plus, it will remove all the asbestos in the building. So, it's difficult to break it down to particulars. But this particular share, because the amount fit nicely, it's gonna be for replacing the roof in the building.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. If there's no other questions, I'd be looking for a motion to forward to the full board with recommendation of approval. Moved by Bear, supported by Williams. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, passes unanimously. It takes us to item I, Airport. Approve the ground lease for Hangar 156-A.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman Kennedy. So, this is a brand-new hangar. And right now, we have 61 private-owned hangars in the building or in the airport. And we have 16 county-owned hangars. So, this will be an additional hangar, which will provide additional revenue of $2,200 to the airport. And it's, one of the benefits of having done several updates to the airport is that now, in the last year, we've had, with this new hangar, there'll be three brand-new hangars that have been brought into the airport. So, this is a request to approve the ground lease. It's a 20-year lease for Hangar 156-A.
Committee members, any questions? Seeing none, be looking...
Hold on a second.
Commissioner Bear.
Juan, in the interest of seeing this project move smoothly and not have any bumps in the road, you've told the owner of this building that they need to have the building permit and occupancy permit from Blackman Township. And that's correct. Have they also been informed that they will very likely need a soil erosion sedimentation control permit issued by the Jackson County Department of Transportation? And they will need a site plan approval from the Drain Commissioner. I hope they know these other things are likely required. I don't want to see this project stopped, stopped in the middle because they didn't apply for these.
Yes, sir. Now, that's, it's a good point. And so, in order to have the process move forward with Blackman Township and all the different permits, they need to have the support from the county that we are willing to agree to give them a lease. So, what I told the owner of this hangar is that we're gonna give them a conditional approval, which is pending all the approvals of the soil erosion permits. And we already have the Drain Commissioner's approval, but they also need to have the occupancy permit as well as the construction permit from Blackman Township. So, so this is step one in the process, so getting the hangar built. So, yes, we're aware of all that. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, be looking for a motion to forward to the full board with recommendation of approval. Moved by Bear, supported by Walls. Moved by Bear, supported by Walls. Any discussion? Ask for a roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Commissioner Walls.
Yes.
Commissioner Williams.
Yes.
Chair Shotwell.
Yes.
Committee Chair Kennedy.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thanks, Juan.
Thank you for your support.
Have a great day. Takes us to item J, Jackson County Department of Transportation Financial Quarter Ended September 30th of 2025. We have lots of people heading up. Cecilia.
Hello.
Good morning.
So yes, I am here to go over and see if there's any questions on the quarter ended 9:30, 25 of the JDOT's financial statements. A positive, if you see on page two, at the end of 9:30, there is an increase to the fund balance of 3.3 million. Reviewing the revenues and expenditures, I don't see any concerns. Does the board have any comment, questions?
Any questions, Board, committee members? Seeing none, be looking for a motion to receive the report. No, excuse me. This is forwarding it to the full board. I'm going to take the first motion off the floor and re, look for a motion of, forwarding it to the full board with recommendation of approval.
Support.
Did I read that right? This thing's not uploading.
There's no, there's no action on it.
It is a report. Sorry. Okay. We don't need to do that. It's just a report. Take a motion to receive the report.
Support.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, passes unanimously. Sorry for the confusion.
Thank you. Hope you guys have a good day.
You too. And this takes us to roadside mowing.
All right, good morning. So we are asking the board to approve our roadside mowing contract to Quick Mow, Inc. for two years with a possible one-year extension at a cost not to exceed 180,000 dollars per year. This is not our normal contractor. We have not used them, but we have checked with other agencies, and they are happy with their work. And it is a decrease of 3.3, $3.34 per centerline mile. So we want to give them a try.
Any questions, committee members? Seeing none, be looking for a motion to forward to the full board with recommendation of approval. Moved by Bear.
Support.
Supported by Walls. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, passes unanimously. Takes us to farmland lease extension.
So we are asking the board to allow us to approve another one-year extension to Zachary Rapley to farm the parcels there listed in our document. This bid was put out in 2020, so it's a number of years old, but we do not have any interest, and they still want to farm it. So we're asking the board to approve it.
Committee members, any questions? Seeing none, be looking for a motion to forward to the full board with recommendation of approval.
So moved.
Moved by Bear, supported by Williams. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, passes unanimously, and that takes us to the monthly report.
All right, the first items in our monthly report are grant projects. The Mike Levine Trail, the only thing left on that project is the concrete flatwork, some concrete flatwork, signage, and fencing. The pedestrian bridge was installed. You can see that aerial on the left there that was done on the 29th. Our next site is our Sutton Road Wildwood Avenue paving project. That project is complete. Then we have our Moscow Road paving. We are still waiting for the mumble strips to get done on that project to complete that. Our next site is our safety projects that we were awarded. The top portion are basically sign projects that we got funding for, so horizontal curve signs and intersection signing for 20 locations throughout the county. And then the bottom portion are our three tree removal projects that we got safety funding for that also include some signing and pavement marking. But once again, our engineering team did great work and got the maximum amount of safety grants that we could for the year. Then we go on to our local work. The township participation projects are pretty much wrapped up for the year. We're doing punchless items, and we have some slope restoration, shoulder restoration we're still doing in Columbia Township. You just can look through there and you'll see some pictures. Then we get to our maintenance for our QR summary there. Unfortunately, we're up to seven potholes in this one last month. If you remember, we had zero open potholes when I stood before you, but we're still going, doing good there. Our contracted patchers are done for the year. I believe it was the last week, was there last week. Then you go to our patching summary for the, the year. October, we did 363.95 tons of HMA, but for a total so far for the year, we're at 3.76 miles of paving that we could have done. And then our last site is our permits. We had 54 oversized seasonal permits, 121 right-of-way permits, and 42 inspections she did for soil erosion.
Any questions? Seeing none, be looking for a motion to receive the report. Moved by Bear, supported by Williams. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good day.
You too. This takes us to item nine, or, excuse me. Item 4N, it's Resolution Number 11-25.31, East Michigan Ave Road Diet. And I believe Commissioner Snell is presenting this to the board, and so we will give him the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Blackman Township, and I've been talking about this project for quite a while. The Township Board is opposed to this, probably in part because of the issues we had at Parnell and Lansing Avenue with the trail going in there and the road diet that's happened there. I've driven that area of Blackman Township and East Michigan Ave for years. I don't see a need to reduce the traffic flow, neither do they. My understanding, at one time, this project would have taken out the way Ganson and East Michigan Ave interacts and close off the, the lane that would go down to Ganson. We felt that was a big safety risk with our trucks, fire trucks. But overall, we just don't see a need to do this. You know, if the city wants to do their part up to Blackman Township, that's fine. There is an intersection there at, I think it's Roberts Road in East Michigan Ave, where it could be four lanes in Blackman Township going down to three lanes into the city, if that's what they want to continue to do. And my understanding, it won't, this won't involve Leoni Township either. So Leoni would continue to have five lanes. They have a center turn lane and two lanes in each direction. So I, I would hope that we'd pass this. This would actually go to MDOT, not JCDOT, because this is a MDOT project, not a JCDOT project. So with that, I would ask for your support to pass this resolution.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions? I'll just add briefly, even though Leoni's not affected in this, I did speak to their board, and they certainly don't want their lanes reduced either in their township. So I don't really see why Blackman would either. It wouldn't make sense to go down to one and then back to four. So you'll have my support. So I'd need a motion to forward this to the full board with recommendation of approval. Moved by Bear.
Support.
Supported by Williams. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'd ask for a roll call vote.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Walls.
Yes.
Commissioner Williams.
Yes.
Commissioner Bear.
Yes.
Chair Shotwell.
Yes.
Committee Chair Kennedy.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I do apologize. I know the motion is passed, and I'm in full agreement, but I do have a question, a question on this. Am I allowed to ask that?
Sure.
So understanding what this project does, I do stand in support of this. Moving forward predicated upon what MDOT decides to do with this resolution, do we have any other options that we can use, any legal options we could use to fight this at all?
I don't think so. This is more of a statement than anything. It's not, it's not any legal action. Am I correct in that?
Yeah, most resolutions is just a, you know what I mean? But I'm just curious if there's, if we have the option to take this any further.
I would ask the administrator to address that.
Best of my knowledge, no.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Nothing further.
Yep. Okay, so that'll take us to item 5A, motion to pay the claims. Moved by Bear.
Support.
Supported by Walls. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, passes unanimously. Takes us to item B, other minutes. I do not see any. Takes us to item C, reporting for, reporting schedule for December. We'll have the Jackson County Department of Transportation Semiannual Report, the Animal Shelter Report, Emergency Management Report. Takes us to item 6A, the second opportunity for public comment. Is there any public comment? Excuse me.
Good morning, fellow commissioners. Chairman Jim Shotwell, also private citizen Jim Shotwell representing Summit Township. I wanted to take this time to recognize our veterans in Jackson, Michigan, and Jackson County, and the important service that they did to allow all of us to sit up here and be able to debate all the issues. They put forward their own lives and put them on the line so that we could be a democracy in the United States of America. And I think it's important that we recognize them, and that's why I've taken the time to speak here under publicly comment. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Second chance, last opportunity. Seeing none, public comment is now closed. Takes us to item 7A, committee member comments. Are there any committee member comments? Commissioner Bear.
Thank you, Chairman. When things change and aren't done the same way from one meeting to the next, it catches my attention. And I just know that the way this meeting's being conducted is different than the way the meeting was conducted in October. I don't have a problem with either one, but when you look at the minutes from October, the persons present in October are the same exact people that are present right now. If you look at the minutes from October, every vote was the four committee members, and Chairman Shotwell was present at that meeting and not voting. This meeting, he's present, and he's being called upon to vote for every issue that comes up. I don't have a problem either way. I'd just like an explanation why. Did something change in the Open Meetings Act? Did we last month not do it properly by leaving him out from the vote? Why, why the difference between October and November?
Really big question for Chairman Shotwell. I believe he can exercise his right to do that anytime, and he didn't choose to last month, but I'll let him address it.
Under Board Rules Policy 4070, the chair and vice chair are ad hoc members of committees, and upon absence of a committee member that is prolonged, we have the right to vote. So if I wasn't here at the next committee meeting or Human Services, and Commissioner Kennedy was, he would have the right to vote. That's all. That's where it comes from. I apologize that, that we did not do that last month, but we didn't become aware of everything that's been going on with our, with our committee, Commissioner, Commissioner Duckham. That's all. Thank you for your question, Commissioner Bear.
Go ahead, Commissioner Bear.
So the short answer is that last month and every month preceding, we just didn't do it properly.
I think he can exercise his right or not exercise it, and, and previously, I don't think we were anticipating that Commissioner Duckham was going to be absent due to his health issues like he's having right now. And, and now we're aware of it.
Very good.
Yep. Any other committee member comments, questions? Okay, if not, meeting is adjourned.